Maybe they come in and tell us-
Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, December 4th, 2006. This evening, City Council has both a Planning and Development Committee meeting first, and then at 7:30 we will go into our regular session of council. Normally, Member Phillips is the Chair of the Planning and Development Committee. She will be here shortly. I think she's talking to someone else in the hallway. And her absence, Member Bane will start our meeting.
Oh, thank you. I was the one who scheduled it. What we would like to do is tighten up the part of the ordinance that deals with the question of bonding. And while Debbie is looking for the ordinance in question, because I have a pile of papers and can't locate mine, I would like to say that this is part of a more long-term plan as opposed to a short-term plan, which was solving the Shady Lane problem. 0147-06 is a proposed amendment to the code subdivision regulations, public improvements, and requirements for construction of improvements. I assume by extension that this would also apply to PUDs, as well as the subdivision. Okay, so what we're asking is that prior to the granting of approval of final plat, the existing language, "requirements for approval and length of term for performance guarantee shall be administered by the Safety Service Director or his or her designee." And that's the first change that Gary said would probably tighten it up for us. And then going down to 2108-02, "performance bond, certified check or irrevocable letter of credit." Then we're adding, "The bond shall guarantee the availability of funds to execute construction of the improvements according to the plans and specifications approved by the Planning Commission." And it says, "The bond shall not be released," this is the third change, "until the improvements have been accepted by the city." And lastly, if we turn the page over on Page 2, "If the developer desires to transfer his/her interest in property that is subject to a performance bond pursuant to this section, the developer shall, prior to the transfer of said interest, complete all work to release the bond, require the new owner to post a replacement bond or irrevocable letter of credit prior to the transfer." So what we've started to do then is to remedy the problems that may be remedy the problems that have emerged in some of our more recent experiences. And it's pretty clear then with these changes that, and the Law Director, I asked him, how can we make this better? And this is what he sent me back. I assume if some of you have had a chance to look at it and would like to talk about it now? He's not here to say anything about it, but there it is, yes?
I had a question. The third change, which says the bond will be held until construction is completed, it doesn't put a timeframe on it. But should there be some outer limit that if the construction doesn't occur within so long that we would invoke the bond and finish it ourselves?
You know, that makes a lot of sense, Jim. I don't know why it maybe when Gary comes, we can ask him or amend it. But I think one of the issues is that occasionally there'll be a street that will start developing at one end and then move out, and they're concerned often about the problems with the heavy equipment going over the street when it's finished. And so I think we've had an example of that in our own recent experience up in Oakmont.
Oakmont.
Yes. But just trying to tighten it up. I hope that, yeah, Debbie?
Okay.
You want to talk in your own committee meeting, huh?
Yeah. In some of the discussion around the situation that's been happening out in the plains on Shady Lane, it seemed like there is a difference between a performance bond and a maintenance bond. And the time period that we had in place for the maintenance bond, I think, is to deal with unforeseen issues that may come up after it looks okay initially and we've accepted the streets. And so I don't feel comfortable removing the two-year maintenance bond in exchange for this language about accepting the street. I feel like the performance bond is one thing, and the maintenance bond for the two-year period is a different thing.
Well, then we can just, we could amend it on first reading if you think that would work. Plus a two-year maintenance bond for a total of three years after acceptance of the streets?
That's what I think, and I'd like to hear the mayor's opinion on this.
Well, there's a couple of things. And I'm not seeing the whole section of code in front of me, so I don't-
Nor am I.
Yeah. Like, one of the things that was always a question is establishing the amount of the bond, and it just says here, as it currently reads, "equal to the estimated cost plus 10%." Well, whose estimate?
The city engineer.
Particularly, we, well, we've been doing this, having it as a construction estimate performed by a professional engineer, and that's what we base it on.
That's good.
This is a matter of administrative-
Somebody on our side, right?
Well, we have it. If we didn't prepare, we'd review it with ours now. The other point, and I guess we can do administratively, because we're saying not released until the improvements have been accepted by the city. And usually this covers water, sewer, streets, you know, lots of different things, and maybe streets in more than one location. So I think we're past where we would partially approve a street. But if a street, they put in for three different streets and bond up for three, and one's done acceptable, we would usually reduce, you know, the bond. And I think that's just kind of implied in there, so.
And you have estimates, I mean, when you get it back from our consulting engineer or from our own engineer, you have an idea of what the relative estimate of each one was. So, I mean, you'd be in a position to do that.
Right, but what we do also administratively, if it's in the city, at each point the contractor is doing one of the critical functions, they have to notify us, and we have somebody on site to view what's being done. It's much like what the state does, is in the respect like if you're burying a waterline, they want to see it before it's covered over to make sure that the proper compaction of materials around it, so that it's not sitting on solid rock like some of those on Columbus Road are and causes maintenance problems down the road. So we do do, and they have forms that the maintenance personnel, our techs, have to fill out, and we've added some degree of digital pictures, and then at times we ask for, well, we require them to do soil compaction tests and then have that done by a certified engineer and turned over to us. But still, you know, you're doing a certified compaction every 30, 40 feet, well, as you well know, it's not almost always all the same ground, all 30 feet, but you can't, you know, where do you stop?
So can you tell us the difference between a maintenance and a performance bond and where one starts and leaves off then?
Well, the maintenance bond, or the performance bond is done at the time the city-state takes over the street from a maintenance standpoint. Any maintenance that is repaired to the base or to the surface of the street would then be covered by the bond, the maintenance of, you know, streets old and plowing and those kind of things are not something that's recovered through the maintenance bond. But we had recommended a couple of years ago to extend that from one to two years because, you know, we just felt that it was necessary. And the county has since followed suit on that. But usually within two years, if you really have a structural problem, you should begin to appear.
And Debbie Walker just told me that the strike-through was supposed to stop after the exceed one year, the two-year maintenance bond, if that's just a typo?
Okay, thanks.
The rest of that strike-
I was getting ready to jump right in there with you.
So it stops where now?
So the only strike-through should be exceed one year in that section.
And then for a total of three years.
Okay.
The next three lines should not be struck out at all. Is that correct?
Okay.
Okay, so when you approve a plat, that is the, which bond is that? That's the performance bond?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that goes-
We usually do that, we don't do that from a planning commission standpoint, it's forwarded on to council. And usually what happens is that, unless we've done it administratively, is that they don't have their final estimates and final design and everything done, even when it's at council, because they haven't spent the extra engineering dollars to do it. So we don't record the plat until the bond is in hand. Because that still meets the intent, I think, of the law. I think on University of States, we didn't file a plat for almost two years.
I remember. It's under Debbie's desk.
Okay, so what kind of mechanism prevents the bond from disappearing then? Is there a mechanism that-
Well, the bond is physically in our hands. I mean, we have either a letter of irrevocable credit from the bank or a bond from a surety company that is on deposit with the auditor account. Where my concern is, and I don't know where it meets practically, and I'd have to talk to somebody that issues these, when it's for the lifetime of it, do they still settle one price, or do they set a payment plan up saying, "Well, as long as this is in effect, you're going to pay X dollars every six months," or something? Well, if they do that and then they don't make the payment, still, what do we do? Or do we require them to have that worded? We don't know necessarily what the payment schedule is. Is it fully paid for? Is it partially paid for? And that's where I'd really have to ask somebody in the insurance field to say, "How would you handle this?"
When I talked to Gary about it, you know, I had the clear impression that he favored the promissory, not the promissory note, but the note.
Yeah, well, the letter of credit, the bank's irrevocable is usually preferred, yes.
Yes, what the street-
But again, I don't know what conditions they have.
Mm-hmm.
And if there aren't any, and we're just getting the final product of the bond or the letter of credit. What happens when you get the letter from the bank saying, "The letter of credit has been revoked because of..."
The land is there.
You know, that's why, you know, I've always talked, you know, talked about, where's the penalty clause? And that gets us into some degree of difficulty, because really, in the subdivision regulations, as I recall, if you don't, let's say you, someone, something should have been done under a subdivision regulation that wasn't, the developer never submitted it, I think it's only a minor misdemeanor for $100.
Should be a felony, don't you think?
Yes.
I was just-
Red and white stripes, that's what we should have.
Bill?
I hope I'm asking the obvious and blindsiding you as soon as you say-
That's right. Give Gary a break.
On these performance bonds, we are protected in a bankruptcy, right? The developer goes bankrupt, bleeds town, tells us all to go to hell. The bank has to pay to finish up.
Nobody is protected totally in a bankruptcy, but as much as you can be protected, you can certainly apply to the bankruptcy court to enforce that.
And give them one.
Yeah, and you're going to be a priority creditor, as far as I'm concerned, in bankruptcy. So in bankruptcy, there's no, I mean, there's just no absolute protections in those kind of situations. But those are really rare and far between, and if a developer goes bankrupt, yeah. But you are as protected as you can be, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for doing this for us. We got a little zealous on the maintenance bond, and it's back here.
Yeah, I noticed this week.
I hadn't noticed that. Okay, anybody else? Jim, you're, okay, no?
I had a question where this, the new language says the term, "The bond shall not be released until the improvements have been accepted by the city." What if, what if that improvement drags on for four or five years? The developer's still around? When do we say, "Okay, that's long enough, we're going to take that bond money and finish this street or put in this waterline"?
Yeah, those are a judgment call, and it all depends on what's reasonable under the circumstances of the situation. I would expect for due process reasons, we would give notice in a certain timeline for which there, these things are normally completed. In the normal course of things, they're normally completed within a year, so that would be the basic standard that you would judge things by. And there might be extenuating circumstances that would extend it somewhat beyond that, but I can't think of hardly any circumstance that would extend it into four or five years, to be frank.
I think it's, yeah, one of the things Gary said would kind of focus it would be having the Service Safety Director in charge. So that would certainly be the person that we would expect would know and would be able to do all of the different parts. Any other comments? Okay, my other, Plan B, my additional request is, I asked the mayor to think about this already, and I would like to see us do an development engineer to look out for our interest in these cases. And I guess the idea came to me when we were on our field trip, and Ron Lucas said, I mean, just because he sees the world in a specific way, but he said, "Oh, you know, it looks to me like there's some kind of rock thing that's interfering with or is creating this situation where the streets were having some issues in that particular place that we were looking at the situation." So I was thinking, you know, maybe somebody with that viewpoint, with an engineering background who could just wander in, even when they're not necessarily expecting it and seeing if those pipes are on bedrock or something else, somebody to, I mean, I would see it as an advantage to us and maybe, and I hope, consider it, please.
Oh, yes.
Plan B.
Right, because we now, you know, we have a professional engineer on staff, as of today, again.
Good. Yay, welcome back.
All safe. Thank you.
But I think there's a times you can augment that. We were primarily doing that with our contract with Burgess and Viable before, and we would ask various different engineer specialties, because if we were doing bridge work versus water versus sewer versus roads, I mean, they have more specialized engineers than just a general civil engineer, which we have on staff. So, you know, you have to augment and have a little bit of, we've put a little bit of money in the other admin for professional services. Now, in most cases, you've given us the authority to be able to build that back to the developer when we're doing review of plans and everything, so we'd want to-
I, you know, and I'm all for the augmentation, but I would, you know, I think there's a lot to be said for having our own as well, and someone to look out for our interests as, but I'll bring it up next year. Okay, I'm adjourned, I guess. Debbie's committee is adjourned. Unless she has a miscellaneous. Nope. Okay. Got a minute or two then. And this is what Steve said, right there?
Yes.
Okay, and you're going to move that. Yeah.
Welcome back. It's Monday, December 4th, 2006. It's on or about 7:30 PM, and we are beginning our regular session of Athens City Council. We do have a forum with five members present?
Five members.
Under Communications, I do have a letter I will be reading, and I'll try to make it quick, from the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control. Dear Clerk of Legislative Authority, the purpose of this letter is to notify you that all permits to sell alcoholic beverages in your political subdivisions will expire on February 107. In order to maintain permit privileges, every permit holder must file a renewal application. Ohio Revised Code Section 4303.271B provides the Legislative Authority with the right to object to the renewal of a permit and to request a hearing. The hearing may be held in the county seat of the county in which the permit premises is located if that request is made in writing. This will be your only opportunity to object to the renewal of a liquor permit premises, which might be a problem in your community. In order to register a valid objection with the division and obtain a hearing, the Legislative Authority must pass a resolution which specifies the reason for objecting. This resolution must be addressed to the division and put marked new later than January 207. The reasons for the objection must be based upon the grounds set forth in the Ohio Revised Code 4303.292A. The chief legal officer of your political subdivision must submit a statement with the resolution that, in the chief legal officer's opinion- That would be you, I guess. -the objection is based upon substantial legal grounds within the meaning and intent of Ohio Revised Code Section 4303.292. I won't finish reading it, but this letter will be in the clerk's office for council members and any other member of the community that would like to review it and ask that a council member bring forth such action. Any questions on that? Are there any other communications?
No report, Mr. President.
Okay. And that was our law director.
You looked at him.
Mayor Abel.
No report.
Okay, nobody wants to talk tonight. Ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 12406, an ordinance granting an easement to the State of Ohio for installation of electric fiber optic cable and telephone lines on Mill Street. Member Phillips?
Mr. President, I move adoption of 012406.
Second.
This ordinance does exactly what it says in the title. The easement is attached to the ordinance, it just grants this easement. So it, when we had looked at it before, it only looked at fiber optic, and so we did get that straightened out and include the other utilities that are in there as well.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 12406?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 12606, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to purchase two marked police cruises. Member Wild?
I move adoption of 012606.
Second.
This is almost our annually purchase of two police cruises so they can cruise in style. The total amount is $59,000. Well, we replace them, so they're dependable, and everybody gets to hold a car. That's about all I have to say about it, I guess.
Does this, that isn't enough? Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 12606?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 12806, an ordinance amending the Athens City Code Title 29,000 Regulations. Member Bane?
Mr. President, I move adoption of 012806.
Second.
Mr. President, 012806 is a companion to 02906, and the two of them together are at the request of Code Enforcement Office, which, whose employees often find themselves out for an appointment, and the other half of the appointment doesn't show up, and they suggested a little cost to the people who chew up their time this way, and that's what 012806 and 012906 will do. It's $25 for a no-show. I was going to call it the deadbeat, but I don't think that's quite it, but you get the general gist of what we're doing here.
Stood up, ordinance?
The stood up, yeah, abandoned, rejectionary.
Member Flowers?
I have a question. Is it the property owner that has to-
Yes. Yes.
Number Wild?
And this is an effort to make our code-offs a little bit more efficient, so they don't have to stand around and wait.
Waiting.
Other comments?
Just a quick clarification, not necessarily property owner, it could be, or the manager, right?
Right. Exactly. Responsible person.
Not a tenant, though?
Not a tenant.
Okay. Just clarifying.
I promise you won't have to pay it.
They end up paying it in the end.
Yeah. Yeah.
It ran an increase.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 12806?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 12906, an ordinance amending ordinance 02706, establishing fees as required by the Athens City Code, produced by all members. Member Bane?
Mr. President, I move adoption of 012906.
Second.
012906 sets the fees for the no-show for the, for the stand-up.
And that would be $25?
$25 per unit.
$25 each time, does it go up for second offense or anything like that?
I'll read it quick. I think we're starting with 25.
25.
If we find that it doesn't work, then we'll go to-
Chronic no-shows.
Felonies.
Your new word for the no-er.
Red and white, red and beige stripes.
Oh, geez.
Quickly losing control. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 12906?
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Ordinances for second reading, 013106, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into contract for the operation of the Athens City transportation system for a period commencing January 107 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 13206, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 23, zoning code, to provide the Municipal Arts Commission must recommend murals. Ordinance 13306, an ordinance closing Park Place and a portion of the intersection of Mulberry and South Court Street streets on Saturday, February 10, '07, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM for the grand opening celebration of the new Baker Center at Ohio University. Ordinance 13406, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 7, traffic code pertaining to handicap parking penalties. Ordinance 13506, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of chlorine, fluoride, salt, caustic soda, and sulfur dioxide. Ordinance 13606, an ordinance authorizing the cleaning and repair of water wells. Now on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 13706, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit a request to the Ohio Department of Development to use currently held revolving loan fund dollars and/or program income funds for leasing the proposed market pavilion at the university mall as a community development project to be used to support for small business development, and authorizing the mayor to pursue additional grant funds and accept donations for said purpose. Member Phillips?
This ordinance does exactly what it says. We heard from Leslie Schaller last week about the plans to construct a market pavilion out at the mall, and I think this is an excellent use of the revolving loan fund money, because it will help quite a large number of small businesses to grow and thrive, and it's going to be a great addition. So I'm really happy to see this moving forward.
Other comments? Leslie, did you wish to speak? Ordinance 13806, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau to allocate funds to be used in support of tourism development grants. Member Patterson is not present tonight, and Member Flowers will be speaking.
Thank you, Mr. President. More specifically, this is just a, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract which supports the tourism development grants and able to expend up to $12,000 to do so.
Other comments? Ordinance 13906, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application for grant funds through the Ohio Department of Transportation for municipal bridge funds. Again, Member Flowers?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an ordinance, as you stated, authorizing the mayor to submit an application for grant funds for bridge project, more specifically, the Richland Avenue Bridge project.
Member Sands?
Which Richland Avenue Bridge?
The six-
Over the Hawking River.
You wanted over the existing Hawking River.
Yeah, the new Hawking River. The re-located Hawking River.
The faux Hawking.
A Hawking River with water in it. Other comments? Ordinance 14006, an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year and during December 31, '07, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Jim Sands, Chair.
I guess I'm-
Boy, a short one-sentence thing that encompasses so much.
So much. And council members have copies of what is the annual appropriation ordinance, and actually, I'm going to ask the mayor to speak about highlights both here and the staffing levels, because this is, I just am seeing this for the first time myself. And I know the mayor has spent much time with these ordinances and is very familiar with them.
I think that the budget is a complex issue. It rolls through, and people come up with things all the time, it seems, because what does council do a lot of its time on, amend the budget for things that come up. I have not had the auditors-
I have not had the auditor's office do a thorough review of this. They've begun some of the payroll areas of it, so we're gonna probably find what I call bookkeeping or clerical errors in this. Since I sent it up to you at 4:25, I found $200,000 because I didn't get it to roll up properly on income tax refunds. And so, there's none in the budget that's before you, except on my copy that I printed, But, so we're gonna have some of those types of items. But in general, this is, only has a few changes in it. I think where you'll particularly note changes is where I have not put in a lot of things with respect to projects. Like, there's nothing budgeted in street rehab. We know there will be things, but until those projects get further along, there's no sense putting an artificial number down. I'm gonna have to come back to council and ask for specific legislation on anyway. So I've used some round-figure numbers, like for the street rehab and some normal replacement of vehicles, et cetera. I think within the general fund, the only change in the staffing that is there is we're gonna, from the previous discussions of council, fill the one patrol position that I had left vacant when we added the extra lieutenant, and then add in the staffing ordinance one additional patrol officer to that, and it is reflected in the budget at the beginning officers rate, and we've already begun to advertise for that. A few of the things that we've done in the other proprietary funds or special funds. I increased the tourism dollars a little bit because I felt that with the opening of a hotel in January and another hotel probably later this summer, we were gonna wind up paying the travel bureau a little more money, plus the council, I believe, wanted 12,000 or 14, something like that, for grants to supplement there, so I upped that amount a little bit. Transportation assistance, I've left as is, but we're still negotiating with all the bidders, and so we will probably have something to change, change that amount. Did not allocate anything in state highway or wheel tax either. All the different funds under the judge's area are the budgets that he submitted to me. The CVG formula grants, I need to put still into there. I thought I'd done that today. And again, that's once probably didn't roll up properly. That was for the chip grants. I remember doing it, but it isn't in that total, that amount. You'd have to add about $300,000 to the 248. In the Athens Enhancement Fund, I upped that about $10-plus thousand from what we've had in the past, because as we talked about last summer, I felt that would be a good area to put about $10,000 or maybe a little more if we could find it for the maintenance of the West State Street Cemetery, because it really hasn't had a dedicated line in it, and that's where I put that $10,000 to do that.
Rick?
Yes.
Concern of cemetery, there was some discussion about putting a plaque in there, updating the plaques on the...
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what Mr. Gilkey was doing, something about that, or do you know what's going on with that?
No, he has, because what, there's a series of plaques that have the names of veterans that are buried there that served in, like, World War I, or Civil War, or Spanish America, et cetera. We've since, because of the continuing research that Cherry has been doing, have discovered more.
Mm-hmm.
So we were talking about either an augmentation plaque or a new one. We also think that the pillars there need probably rebuilt...
Repointing.
Rather than repointed, because it was there. There needs some ironwork there. We have a fairly decent fence on one side, but not on the First Street side, et cetera. So, we can definitely spend more money than Tim, but I think we need to start, and this was what my thoughts were, because we were kind of burying within our own, you know, the mowing and some of the other stuff that goes on there gets buried in the street funds budget and everything. But this will at least give a capital-type budget for it. I've left it in the 200 and 300 series because it's primarily gonna be contractors working materials.
Okay. I just wondered.
But yeah, there's, I have a whole laundry list of ideas for that one that our internal groups and citizens on the West End have brought to us. There's plenty to do there. In recreation, the major change that I made, all concerns Arts West. Arts West, Arts West in its initial year was in the community center operations budget, kind of with the concept, this is an extension of the community center, it's just a performing arts center. I kind of revised my thinking on that in the respect that, I know the goal is always been to break even, just like the community center. It doesn't always happen, but the community center, the only tax dollars we put in there is a dedicated tax, so I didn't think Arts West had any claim on that. So I moved it over into recreation to make it more like a pure recreation program that it probably is, because there's not much difference between having a building as a facility and ball fields and soccer fields and everything else and a pool to maintain. So, I made that switch from 271 to 270 of the programming dollars of Arts West, and also, as was suggested at a previous council meeting, upgrading that position to a full-time position of coordinator for Arts West, probably, I think in the staffing ordinance, I put it under a program coordinator, but as I qualified last week, we want to run the normal civil service evaluation and structure for that position. Let's see. I have done this sort of with the idea, meaning the water and the sewer fund and the parking garage, I did put the debt funds in that are normal structural debt, because we already know what the interest rates are, and we know when the payments are. A couple of them, though, that were ones that we had done because of particular problems, I'm thinking of the $250,000 in the sewer fund, because we know we're gonna have to match in the Columbus Road, I don't know when we're gonna be able to pay that off. So I thought, let's get further along before we do that. There's also another companion ordinance that the auditor's office and I, I guess, have to work on, is that if she sees any funds that are gonna be in the negative, because we've had an encumbrance against them that's based upon grant funds coming in, and we haven't received the grant funds because we can't draw it down until we get a bill, the state auditor's office has said we have to unappropriate those at year-end, and then reappropriate them in the next year. Since we don't know those numbers yet, that will be one coming to you probably on the 19th, asking for suspension of rules, because we're just not gonna know the numbers and which funds those are, just to alert you to that. I've kept medical insurance at the same amount as it has in previous years. I've upped the workers' compensation because of the higher premiums.
Refund his workers' comp?
Workers', well, it's overall in everybody's personnel, rather than as a separate fund.
Okay.
I did put in the TIF as a fund here. I've gotta get with, I had not gotten with Kathy yet to determine what our estimate of the amount, because that comes from the county auditor's office, and we have to distribute that to the school system, et cetera. Again, that's one that, if we want to leave it off, we can, because until we get the payment, we don't know how much, from the auditor's office, we don't know how much we really got collected, and it's gonna be over $25,000 anyway, it's gonna need, even though it's a grant, so just some of those things like that may not be included. Overall, the general fund budget for this coming year is $11,757, as I projected. That'll change slightly, as I said. Total budget right now stands at $29,250,000, and we'll make changes during the course of the year. As you go over this and the supportive documents, feel free to call me or stop by, and we can go over different segments that are on it. What I'm asking most of the departments to do, unless we have a particular utility, you know, problem, or gasoline problem in their budget, is to try to hold the line in the 200 and 300 series across.
Okay. Thank you. Questions?
You just said the general fund is $11 million something? This is showing $10 million five?
Yeah, it was $11 million last year. Sorry. The $10 million 757.
We've got $10 million 557.
Well, I have to add the $200,000 for the refunds.
That's right.
Okay.
And the refunds, which fund is that now?
That would be under the auditor's office, under 600 series.
Okay.
And we can, you know, I just figured, that was my clerical error, and I'm gonna find some more, or the auditor's gonna find them.
You don't, it'll be the first year.
Right. And I can get into any more detail when we go to the staffing ordinance or the auditor's office.
Yeah, and that was my next question. With the changes we were discussing about the pay scale, we should be able to try again on the planner, and that's reflected in here?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Right, and with the other budget, attached to this, I think, are a series of ordinances, and one of them is the pay scale for non-union employees, because I'm recommending a change in that. And it's the staffing ordinance, because there's changes there. I did not make any recommendations to the income tax mix as a change. It's, the income tax isn't coming in like I'd like it to. It's up about 1.5% or something, which is not a whole lot, but at least it's positive, and there are more businesses opening up, so hopefully it will get better. But I know there's talk in the state legislature about, we've been under a freeze of the local government funds for six years, and they're talking about maybe a generous 3% increase to it. So...
And they'll divide it to another school.
Right, but there were also some changes that council has said they would consider with respect to, and I'm still gathering the data for you, with respect to parking enforcement fines. I have need to get that to you yet. So they're all tied back into this budget, one way or another, and then I think that once the auditor's office has been able to book all the receipts of December, then they will really start to look at what's a realistic revenue budget. You don't have to approve that, just the auditor does. And then, in January, sometime late in the month, when we know the carryovers and the certified resources and what you appropriated, we'll know if we have to do a little more work.
Other comments on ordinance 140?
Took the words right out of me. So, go ahead.
Ordinance 14106, an ordinance authorizing staffing levels, a non-union pay scale, and slotting for the fiscal year ending December 31, 07, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith, and declaring an emergency. Again, Member Sands.
Again, the mayor just alluded to the fact that he was, some of the discussion about the appropriation ordinance, we need to talk about some of these changes in staffing to make sense of that, so, again, I'm gonna ask the mayor to talk about this proposed authorized staffing level ordinance.
Okay, there are a couple things in here. You'll see a couple little gaps, as I was working on it today, where you used a fun number, because what we did at the last minute last year, and I don't believe I got it done in the staffing ordinance, was combine, it was formerly an income tax fund and the auditor's office. This does combine, and even in the staffing ordinance here. I have marked where there are open positions, and council has not decided to eliminate those yet. You will see on the first page, I'm recommending one elimination in the general fund, and that's the GIS System Analyst. That is an unfilled position, has been unfilled for over a year because we are contracting now with Ilgard. I think that first year went well. I wanna recontract with them, and I've budgeted the money in it for it, but there's no sense in carrying that one on the books. It's a non-union, you know, slot. I see no real reason to do it. You could probably also cut the, in the mayor's office, the executive assistant, which is open and has had no budget for two and a half years, and I think I'm up at my maximum once we get the planner. I have three appointments that I can make, so there's no way I can make that appointment. So you probably might want to cut that down to one. I had forgotten to mark that on there. In lands and buildings, when we did the closeout of the parking garage with tenants, we created two additional slots before we, that transfer even happened. One of them had transferred to another department. We never filled it, so we have been with an open in general fund custodians with no budget ever since we created it, really. You might want to consider eliminating that one. In the police department, as I've said, I've got one lieutenant on military duty and one patrol officer, but does increase to 20 patrol officers now, and with six lieutenants, the captain, there were 28. Realities, two of them are gone. The highest staffing, I think I can even remember is 29, so we're getting very close to that, especially if we get those that are in the military back. It continues in the fire department with the same number of firefighters that we've had. Code office, I've left that general secretary position open for right now. What I am wanting to do eventually is, once we get the planner, then I'll make a recommendation to you whether to fund that or not, because I don't know what support personnel, whomever we get as a planner, will need, and if the secretary is the proper one, or administrative assistant or some such. In the street budget, I think it's a little bit healthier now. I'm gonna talk with them, but we're budgeted for 12 maintenance techs. We have 10 of those filled. I want to try to keep one of those in the budget, and if, once Andy's back for a little while, we can evaluate, maybe we could bring that position back. Recreation is new and open, obviously. We do have at least one open in the program specialist in the community center. We've done the testing for that position. It's the one that primarily does the childcare, et cetera. And that was, we're in, there's a series of restaffing in the respect that, once you get a retirement in the union ranks, it's sort of, oh, okay, somebody's going to the water plant or the sewer plant, and then that creates a vacancy in street maintenance or in water sewer maintenance, and so we're going through all that, but I didn't list all of those, because all of those are gonna be filled internally, usually through seniority, or if no one wants it or applies for it, then we go out and advertise for it. But those are all funded. It comes down to 176.225 staffing. This does not count the elected officials. It does not count the court, other than the clerk of courts.
Lit control officer, where is that in here?
I forgot.
That's what I was...
Could we have that in here?
Add that in there. That's another clerk. Good catch.
Okay. And where would that fall under? That would be under...
I think the way you set that up, that would have to do under sewer or sanitation administration.
Okay.
Because I think that's where you put the funding.
Yeah, okay. There's a .1 Assistant Service Safety Director.
That's a part of the salary.
Right, I've got water sewer, it covers, water sewer and garbage covers 30% of the assistant.
Yeah, narrow.
Because he runs, or she runs the utility building.
Other questions and comments on ordinance 141?
The other comment that I would make is in the intermittent, temporary, seasonal, or recreation program personnel. Notice I've changed the beginning dollar amounts to the minimum of 685. You'll probably see, in the budget, our operator may be running with a few less people, or we're gonna have to increase the program fees. We have not made any decisions, like, for example, on the pool operation, and that's one that a lot of the cashiers were usually pretty much at minimum wage school, the swim aids, and some of those all were, and so I've asked Kevin to, you know, look at all of that and say, how can we operate that efficiently, and will it take more money from the public?
Okay, Derek.
Member Bane.
Are you done?
Well, you have a question about the intermittent?
No, not about intermittent. Just a generic question, when you're done.
Also included in this ordinance is a pay scale for non-union employees that the mayor has included in our...
Okay, is that the same one? All right.
Yeah, it's in the same...
Oh, sorry.
Same one.
What I've recommended there is in pay range seven, where we're having a little bit of difficulty with two things. One, is recruitment... bit of difficulty with two things. One, is recruitment of a city planner. The beginning wage rate, we thought, was a little bit low. So we, I've upped that by 2,000. And then off the top end, I've increased it by 2,000. Everybody stays where they, because all of pay range seven is a merit or pool type situation. There's no steps. Increased it by 2,000, and we're really gonna have to take a harder look at that during the year, and maybe make an adjustment. Because when I look at the labor contracts we have with the police and fire departments and what lieutenants make, and then look at what captains make, they're just, you know, because like, for example, in the police department, a lieutenant makes 20% more than a patrol officer. And that's negotiated by contract. Well, that means probably that the captain makes maybe 3% more than the lieutenant. That's really not in where we should be. Now, whether that's gonna create a special category of, you know, another range, so to speak, because those are really driven a lot by union contracts as much as anything. And, and a lot of the data that we had in the, in the salary study that we did, and it's available at my office if you want to take a look at it, really indicate that overall, we're, we're running very similar to the cities that responded to us. We're not, you know, we're a little higher in some things, a little lower in others, but it's really not out of line. But we are experiencing, as I say, these two difficulties. And that's really why I haven't asked for a general increase to all of the ranges that were above pay range five, because we did that last year when the survey indicated at that end we were out of balance. It's, this year's survey indicated we were still pretty well in balance, but I've got a couple particular problems in that regard. And then slotting is just a recognition by council that this is where everybody that's in the non-union is, or you're in the merit pool, or merit area, the salary pool you do for when people are above the midpoint in the ranges one through five. Or the step they are going to go to and the date they will go to it, should they continue with the city. And that would be their anniversary date. Everybody that's going to a step and doesn't have an anniversary date, you can make the assumption that means it's at the end of the year. It's a normal payroll.
Okay. Nathan?
I have two questions. Number one is, the grand total for longevity pay is 158,783. Is that right? At least on this, on page, the last, 2006. I was going through it because as I look at it, seems like the people on the high end are low. And then I remember longevity comes in, kicks in. But 158 is, is what we're talking as the grand total, right? Is that about what we paid out this year?
Yeah.
She just grimaced. I don't know. She hasn't done it yet. Come on, it's time.
It is.
What page are you looking at?
Well, maybe it was just a special one only for me. I don't know.
Well, what I'm budgeting for this coming year on longevity, if I roll it up for both general fund and the others, $241,938.
Okay, I guess I did.
Oh, wait a second. It's in the other packet.
Yeah.
It's in the other packet.
I was following along with what he was saying. That's why I was...
I was following your orders.
Oh, you were following your orders. My other question is, probably, it's a political question, and it has to do with what happens to this, not surprisingly, once, let's say, the bargaining unit grabs a hold of it. And they say, huh, what's with you, council? You go ahead and fund Arts West 1.5 FTE instead of the two firefighter positions. And I know there's a difference, but can I be assured that the administration is standing behind that decision? You know, that it's not, it's not just council asking for it?
Oh, yes. I would do that.
Okay.
Certainly.
I mean, that's, as I say, that's a political question. And it, you know, I feel like sometimes they beat us up quite a bit about certain decisions. And so I want to make sure that...
Well, I think that too, I mean, we've said this many times, no matter which area of the city you work in, if it's parks and recreation, or water, or sewer, or streets, or police, or fire, there's nothing more important than your job. And that's, and that's natural. And I think that's what we anticipate of all good employees.
Yeah, and so...
We have to do a balance of, you know, safety from the standpoint of personal safety, but there's also, you know, what I've always called the quality of life and some recreational opportunities, things for children and adults and seniors. And I don't think there's...
Well, they, they have beat us over the head over the Arts West facility. And, you know, then we put a furnace in. Now we're putting FTE in. And just want to make sure we weren't out here by ourselves, holding hands.
No, it's not, because I think that's a revenue, I've seen it be a revenue producing area. And I think the only way to make it even closer to balancing itself out is with somebody there full-time to do it, because we have too many gaps. And you get into, sometimes get into extra time and all. And that's not good, or you have additional people there and the, and the continuity's not there. So you, you have some difficult problems there. But I think the thing to remember is that there is a fee for services for everything in, just about everything in recreation, unless you're at the skate park, or on the bike path, or just having a picnic. But if you're participating in any of the programs where we spend the bulk of our dollars, you're, you're paying for it in addition to your tax dollars. And we're getting very, very close overall, if that's, I think it's very close to 50% of the costs are done through fees, not through taxes.
Well, I think, and, you know, I wouldn't necessarily, I think Arts West, if it even starts to break even, will be fine with me.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think it should. Yeah, I mean, I just want to make sure we weren't out here by ourselves.
Oh, no. I support you.
You were quiet last week, and I didn't know for sure.
I let you all talk.
I didn't, I was stunned.
Nobody asked last week.
I was stunned. I mean, I was just too brain dead by the time we got to that point to even ask that question.
Any other general questions about the budget? Maybe we'll have specific ones at a, at a later time. Obviously, this will need to be passed this month, in December. We have another meeting in the 19th. We may schedule a, a special session, or we may...
Next week. There's gonna be one next week.
There is already gonna be one, so we'll read this for the second time.
Not the 25th, then, right?
I changed on my plan. Okay, so we have a special session already scheduled for next week, somebody says. So we'll read this for the second time next week, looking at passage on the 19th. So please read it over. There, there was a detailed packet that was in our mailboxes. And so look it over, have questions, concerns. Call the mayor before the meeting even, if, if you need some answers. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Other comments on ordinance 141? Ordinance 142-06, an ordinance authorizing a stop-loss medical insurance contract and declaring an emergency. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this is, comes to us from the Personnel Director. Our stop-loss insurance contract is up at the end of this year, and she has advertised for bids. She received four responses. Our current stop-loss carrier, AIG, I should, Arrington, is that? Anyway, AIG is the name of the company. Their bid was the lowest. She, we, she has worked with them for a number of years and feels they give us very good service. Stop-loss insurance is important to us because we are a self-funded health insurance company. This is our insurance that when a claim gets too high for us, this insurance kicks in. And it had, we have used it. In fact, the Personnel Director said she recently, recently received some reimbursement checks from them. So we, we do use it from time to time.
Other comments? Ordinance 143-06, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contact with the Soil and Water Conservation District. Again, member Sands.
Mr. President, we mentioned this at our committee meeting last week. Again, this is an annual ordinance, a one-year contract with the Soil and Water Conservation District. Up to $12,000. It was $12,000 last year. We have every reason to expect it will remain the same in 2007. This contract makes the Soil and Water Conservation personnel available to citizens within the city of Athens who need soil tests for building purposes, whatever. They have concerns about groundwater, not, not their drinking water necessarily, but groundwater questions, et cetera. So I've, I've used them. They're very helpful and very professional. So, again, this is an annual contract. We've done for a very long time.
Other comments? Ordinance 144-06, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to file an application with the state of Ohio to participate in the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Economic Development Program and declaring an emergency. Again, member Sands.
Mr. President, this, this was something that the mayor mentioned at our last committee meeting. This is an approval for the, for the mayor to file an application on behalf of a developer to, to use some of our funds from our revolving loan fund. And the small amount of money that they would get through the economic, from our, our own revolving loan fund, which is held at the Plains Enterprise Development, they're looking at about $50,000. That would give them the ability to get funds from the state. Small Cities Community Development Block Grant of up to $500,000. That loan would then be repaid into our revolving loan fund. So it would be a plus to us. That money would then be available to us. This was, the participant is, is identified, I've lost my place, Athens Health Realty. And they are the developer who is proposing a nursing facility to be built down off of Columbus Road, down behind Tom Parfitt's office, Dental Depot, back in there.
Other comments, Mayor Abel?
I, I feel I need to, because I know we've discussed this in committee and I've discussed it with Jim, but we're in, really in negotiations. And it's really a three-way negotiation standpoint. My opening was 50. I think I'm up, we're maybe closer to 100 now. And part of it is, is the state says, well, we only have so much money. Why don't you put up so much? And we'll put up so much. Then the city has to do it. Then the developer says, this is how much I really need. And I don't know how much will come from the revolving loan fund and how much will come from the state's revolving loan fund, which will be paid back to us. I think, you know, the developer has a target amount, and everybody's seeing if they can meet that along with everything else. But what'll probably happen is because of these is, we'll pretty well about wipe ourselves out of the revolving loan fund for a while until we start getting payments. Although we still have other grants, or other loans that are out right now. We made one other $40,000 loan this year. And, but it is gonna be, there's negotiation that goes into these. This is just an agreement that I can apply for state funds, as we use our, to match some of our revolving loan fund dollars. And with the payment all coming back to us, the last time we did this was with Damon's Restaurant, which is still about, which was about six years ago. And I think we had $425,000 at that time from the state. So, and that loan is still being paid back.
How, is this a competitive loan, barely, or no?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay, so...
Yes, you sort of like, you get in the pot, you know, in line. And the state has so much money each fiscal year. And then, you know, it gets replenished by the legislature or, you know, other sources. And, you know, as you get to the end of each quarter of their, their year, it gets smaller, because people have gotten in line and gotten it. So it just, that's one of the reasons we wanted to get this out of the way and done as quickly as we could, because you get your place in line, so to speak. And then you negotiate, and then how much comes out of the current, or do you have to look at the next? I mean, it's interesting, you know, because, and where the competition comes in is what the commitment the developer makes to jobs, in reality. Because it's all job based. You have to have a minimum number of job creation in order to qualify for the funds. And the more you have in relationship to the dollars that you're asking for, the more competitive your application is.
Other comments? Ordinance 145-06, an ordinance amending the 2006 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this is a...
Next year's? I'm still amending this year.
Exactly. This is an amendment to our current appropriation ordinance. Section 1 reduces several funds in the recreation fund by up to $1,000. One reduction is 200 and some dollars. And decreasing those funds, which then we look at section 2, increasing two funds in the recreation fund, both transaction class 100, which are payroll funds. So as we, as the mayor mentioned at our last committee meeting, here at the end of the year, we're gonna see different departments moving some funds around to, to make use of, of that money in areas where they need it. So Recreation Department has some surplus in several funds. They're removing that, moving it into their payroll line.
Other comments? Okay. Ordinance 146-06, an ordinance adopting the update natural hazard mitigation plan for the city of Athens. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, this just updates the natural hazard mitigation plan, which we had previously adopted. The Ohio Emergency Management Agency has reviewed it and approved it with some minor changes. We did get a list of what the changes are, and I think we have a, a copy of the plan overall in the office there. So this will get us to the point where we have the same plan adopted as OEMA, and can move forward with some of our efforts to, you know, do more education and to mitigate any natural hazard potential.
Other comments? Ordinance 147-06, an ordinance amending the Athens City Code Title 21 subdivision regulations, chapter 21.08, requirements for construction of improvements. Member Bain.
Mr. President, we had a meeting before council and discussed this. Debbie actually gave us a revised version without the deletion of the maintenance bond, which was not, which was not part of the proposal. But there are four changes that we would like to see made. One of them is we shift the administration to the Safety Service Director, or his or her designee, and that kind of sharpens up the focus there. And then the second thing is, the bond shall guarantee the availability of funds and shall not be released until improvements have been accepted by the city. With the caveat, I think the mayor talked about different parts of the bond, and, you know, that's strictly an administrative decision. Finally, the, we can call this the Shady Lane Clause, I guess, or something else. But the developer decides to transfer his interest in property, then they also transfer the responsibility, basically, is what it says.
Other comments? Announcements and other business. Next week, what do we have going? Member Phillips.
Well, first, I need to make a motion. I move that we request the Planning Commission to consider amending the B2D zoning designation to, in accordance with the comprehensive
to, in accordance with the comprehensive plan, to, in the table of bulk controls, to have a limit of four stories or 50 feet, rather than the current six and a half stories that are allowed. That will bring the whole downtown area into conformity with, you know, generally what exists. There will be a couple of existing non-conformities that would be created by doing this, but it is recommended by the plan, and I think it would alleviate a lot of the concerns that have come up in the past, when the question of rezoning to make the whole downtown area the B2D has been discussed. So the motion is to consider changing the bulk control in the B2D zone to a four-story and 50-foot limit.
I second that motion.
And I gave all the explanation while I was making the motion, so, sorry.
And it's Table A that's amended, and 2311, according to what Debbie gave us in the... We'll get it right back to her, right?
Yep, and here's the part in the plan that has the reference, so we'll give you that too.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Okay, we'll send that on to the Planning Commission.
We need to...
Oh, man. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is carried. We will send that on to the Planning Commission.
Mr. President, in addition to the, to the special session, I'd like a City Services Committee meeting.
Seven?
Start with 7:15 or wherever, whatever time you're going to. Well, when will we have our special sessions? At seven, and then afterwards?
Special sessions at seven. You want it after?
Yeah, that would work.
Planning and Development Committee to talk about the proposed development agreement for the summit at Coats Run, and probably miscellaneous.
I might try for Environment Committee. I'm trying to get in touch with Lorraine Macosta about a report for the composting and recycling.
Which coincides with what I was going to say, because Rhonda Clark, who is heading up that committee about composting, had, has asked to come on the...
Okay, she can come for this, yeah.
So...
So let's have her talk first, then. Why don't you just have her come right after our meeting? If she's the only visitor we're going to have.
So put, she's not the only visitor we're going to have.
Okay, we're going to have Richard Kirk, too.
Yeah.
She gets paid by the hour. So she can come for my committee meeting, then, okay?
Okay. Or mine, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, well...
Okay.
Other committees? We'll work out the agenda.
Just so she knows, she's got a lot of kids to put to bed.
Be there, and what time is the pleasure of the committee chairs? Any other business?
Transportation, no.
Transportation, you're on. Taking a break, taking a break next.
Okay.
Opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that we have not covered on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, and having addressed almost items on our agenda, stand adjourned.